Good morning, everybody. How's everybody doing? Good to see a crowd here today. Glad everybody's here. Today is Thursday, November 21st, 2024. This is Flagler County Board of County Commissioners Workshop. It is 9:01 a.m. If I could have everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice
At this point in the agenda, we take a brief moment of silence. This is for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders, the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right, thank you. Again, welcome. This workshop will be our first official meeting with our two new commissioners, so I want to congratulate them once again and welcome them to the dais of Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Carney, along with Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Pennington, myself. We have a full board here today for the workshop. This is a workshop on our ongoing beach renourishment, and staff will lead us on this, our administrator, Ms. Petito. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you all for being here and allowing me to provide you another update on the Flagler County Beach Management Plan. We've worked really hard over the past year or so with community outreach and public engagement. I think we've had at least 20 meetings, maybe more than 20, over the last year. I do appreciate the partnership and the collaboration that we've had along the way. There was some concern at our last meeting on November 4th regarding public use of funding or how the funding was going to be used and applied across the beach. So I wanted to provide you with an update, not only because we have two new board members, but because we also have the intent to use the uniform method of collection on your December 2nd agenda, so it's going to be on your next official board meeting. So I wanted to clear up any concerns or questions that may exist ahead of that. As you know, that MSBU is the method that we were talking about, bringing forward on December 2nd. And even with the approval of the intent for that uniform collection, it doesn't mean that the Board of County Commission has to necessarily move forward. As I stated before, it's more or less a tool in the toolbox as we start working on the budget. The amount that would be levied if the board were to move forward with that would be determined over the next, you know, six to eight months as we prepare the budget. It'll be done through a series of hearings that coincide with the preparation of our budget, notification to property owners, and things like that. So again, there's no decision as far as the financial impact, even at the December 2nd meeting. But I did want to clear up some of the concern regarding public use of funds and how it's applied to the beach. So we'll go ahead. We've got a lot of information, so I'll go ahead and get started. Okay, here we go. So just to provide brief history, the risk to homes, businesses, infrastructure has been ever-present with the numerous storms that have directly impacted part or all of our beaches, starting with Hurricane Matthew, continuing through Hurricane Milton. That includes not only named hurricanes, but also nor'easters. You may have high tides, king tides, or some even lesser weather events that have eroded and collapsed beach dunes at certain places along Flagler's coastline. The Board of County Commission has affirmed a continuous state of emergency ever since Hurricane Matthew. The threat to A-1A in the south had been responded to by FDOT with road repairs. They put in an additional CCANT wall. We also had the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and FDOT coming together to do the dredge sand project in Flagler Beach. That's the federal and the non-federal tapers that was completed right before Labor Day. And then the emergency in the north part of Flagler County really only has been responded to by a couple of emergency or sacrificial dune projects. So we started the construction in the south, and that kind of got a lot of attention through FDOT and Army Corps. But as you go up the northern coast, really the only work that had been done was the sacrificial dune or the emergency work following storms. The county's beachside remains fragile, in some places vulnerable everywhere else due to the extreme and unprecedented erosion that we've experienced over the last eight years. The erosion emergency in the north remains unresolved and continues to threaten upland development. And that section of the county is financially significant to Flagler County as it is a large portion of the unincorporated that presents a rather large tax base. So when we look at the, continuing on with the history of what we've experienced, Flagler County, the emergency declaration has been in place since October of 2016, starting with Hurricane Matthew and prolonged by partial repairs and additional damage from Irma, Dorian, Ian, Nicole, Milton, and then, as I mentioned, numerous nor'easters that don't come with names, but they wreak havoc on our coastline. We've had federal and state declarations which have opened and closed throughout all of these named events. County emergency declaration has been updated and confirmed by this board 180 times over the last eight years, which makes the shoreline probably the highest priority topic for county government to address. Most of the progress toward future exiting emergency conditions has really been funded primarily through federal and state emergency programs. It's been supplemented through HOAs or private landowners that have chose to put in their own seawalls for protection of their property. And then, when we look at this, really the only path forward for Flagler County to be able to exit the emergency condition would be to put in place some sort of local funding ordinance or option to have a funding strategy moving forward that's going to help exit this emergency condition. When you look at Flagler County, I'd say it's probably more vulnerable today than it was with Hurricane, just right after Hurricane Matthew, because what we're experiencing is a seabed elevation that's probably lowest recorded right now. When you look at sea level rise occurring and what's projected for the future, you certainly have a higher risk along the coastline, except for Reach 1. So everywhere else along the coast is more vulnerable than what Reach 1 is today. So that's just kind of to give you the brief history of why we got here and what we've experienced over the last eight years of these named events and these emergency declarations. So Flagler County, obviously, they recognize the need to develop and implement a comprehensive beach management plan for the entire coastline. So in 2021, Flagler County sponsored the Beach Management Study, which was intended to identify beach management needs, the goals, implementation requirements. And then subsequently, the Beach Management Plan was adopted by the Board for implementation in October of 2023. The Flagler County Beach Management Plan has identified four beach and dune renourishment reaches or sections along which restoration and management efforts would be pursued. They were identified based on, considering some of their physical characteristics, some of the permitting requirements that are needed there, different funding opportunities. So there's definitely a distinction between some of these areas as we look down the coast. So we'll start with Reach 1, and that's the further south in Flagler County where we started, and that's primarily the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer project with the supplement of the FDOT funds on the non-federal tapers. So that really was between what we consider marker R-8 or Sixth Street South, going all the way down to R-94, which would be 28th Street South. That would be the Army Corps portion. And then you have the tapers, which continue it from 28th Street South, going all the way down to Gamble Rogers. And then on the north side, it picks up Sixth Street South and brings it up to North Seventh Street. And that's what we're calling Reach 1. That was completed, it started right after 4th of July, and then it completed right before Labor Day. The entire project was just under $30 million, and that was a combination of Army Corps of Engineers as well as FDOT funding that paid for that. So then, when we look at Reach 2, this is for permit modification and design. This will pick up also in Flagler Beach, but it'll cover not just the northern part of Flagler Beach. It'll also be Beverly Beach, the Painters Hill area, and Varn Park. So it'll be going from North Seventh Street in Flagler Beach, and it'll be going just north of Varn Park. So it's about, I think it's 1,900 feet north of Varn Park. What we were looking at doing here was that permit modification so that we could apply dredge from our offshore sand source. It's actually about 5.5 miles of shoreline there. Right now, that permit modification is currently under review with FDEP. We also have a requirement for BOM to be able to use that sand on our leased offshore resources. When we're looking at that, between design and construction, it's estimated to be $35 million. Flagler County does have funding set aside to cover this portion right now as it is designed. We anticipate construction to start. We should have an answer, hopefully, back from DEP and BOM beginning of next year, we're hoping sometime between February and April, and that will probably start this project. It's looking like probably sometime May or June of 2025. And then when we look at Reach 3, as we continue moving north, right now, we've got a permitting and design project, and that would be to pick up just north of Varn Park and go all the way north to the southern limit of Washington Oaks State Park. We will be seeking DEP and Army Corps permits that will allow for comprehensive restoration along that area. Recently, we hired a consultant to work on this particular section of the beach. So to be able to work on that permitting, it's actually going to be coming in front of the board, I think, on December 2nd. But the permitting and design is estimated to be about $1.5 million with construction estimates at about $40 million. We expect that the permitting and design will probably start the beginning of 2025 for Reach 3, with construction anticipated probably in 2026, 2027. Right now, in Reach 3, the only emergency projects in Reach 3, until the rocks, the submerged rock issue actually gets resolved or overcome, what we've had now is really just some emergency placement of sand within that area. But I think that over the next few years, because this is a vulnerable area, we're going to continue to have emergency projects over the next few years until this section can get developed. I know that we're continuing our action towards the 3x3 or 4x4 study with the Army Corps of Engineers, and that needs to be a priority for Flagler County. I know that this board has made that a priority. I know that when we met with Congressman Walz, we mentioned it to him. But there needs to be, I think we also have a letter of intent coming to you. I'm not sure if it's on the first or second meeting in December, but we have that coming before you. But this is an issue that we need to look at. And so if we are successful in being able to do some mitigation with that rock, submerged rock and exposed rock in that area, it would further allow us to be able to use dredge material. I know that we've had a challenge with being able to cover some of that rock that the other exposed or in the water, what they consider hard bottom. There is some additional environmental work that needs to be done there, but I do think that the shoreline management in this area needs to remain a high priority until the emergency that we're experiencing is overcome. So moving on, Hurricane Milton, in the area of the northern, unincorporated area, so the northern 11 miles, we are looking at doing FEMA Cat B and Cat G. So Cat B is some of those emergency measures. And then Cat G, where we're able to qualify for Cat B and G. We currently had brought this to the board on November 4th to move forward with FOSS, to be able to go forward and do the analysis and continue to gather the analysis and information needed so that we can move forward with submission for FEMA's post-disaster public assistance.
Heidi, could you do a real quick definition for Cat B and Cat G?
So your Cat B is your emergency protective measures, and then your Cat G is more of restoring your permanent. When you have a declared emergency through a named storm, when it becomes declared by the state, federal government, and then it's a local state of emergency, it makes us eligible to be able to secure federal and state funding to be able to restore these areas of the beach. So typically, what we see is that our Cat B is right now 100% being paid. It's really the Cat G efforts that will come in at 75% from the federal government. The remaining 25% get split between state and local, which means the state will pick up 12.5%. We are responsible for the other 12.5%. Again, this is the use of public funds at the federal, state, and local level in the area because of the declared emergency, which is why it's important that we have the local state of emergency, which is why we've been bringing it forward at least 180 times over the last eight years, because it makes us eligible for that funding. What we were looking at, although we hired the consultant on November 4th, staff with the use of our drone equipment has surveyed our section of the beach, the unincorporated area. And when we're looking at that in conjunction with a visual inspection that was done by our coastal engineer, we're anticipating that the estimated amount of loss is somewhere around $14 million, just in this 11-mile area in northern Flagler. When we look at that, our local match would be just under $2 million. That's just for Milton. That doesn't include anything south of the unincorporated, so that doesn't take into account the impacts in town of Beverly Beach or Flagler Beach, the city of Flagler Beach. We've had conversations with the city manager in Flagler Beach. He is aware that the city of Flagler Beach is responsible for submitting their own requests through FEMA and state agencies for Cat B and Cat G measures. We've offered assistance. We had a meeting, I believe it was last Friday, with him and his city engineer, so that they're fully aware that they're responsible for that. Because in Flagler Beach, we were the sponsor or the one that initiated the request to the Army Corps of Engineer, we have already taken the liberty to engage with the Army Corps to see if it qualifies for renourishment or rebuilding back just the Army Corps portion, not the non-federal tapers, but just the portion that is the Army Corps. If approved by the Army Corps, the Army Corps would come back and do that at no cost. There would not be a local match within the Army Corps. But in Reach 1, where you have those non-federal tapers that FDOT funded, there will be a cost to rebuild it. The city of Flagler Beach can go after FEMA Cat B and Cat G, wherever it is applicable in their city limits, but they're going to have to initiate that, and then they will be responsible for that local match. As I said, it's about 12.5% of the cost. And where we have Reach 2, and Reach 2 did not start, any impacts to Reach 2 that are within the city limits or town limits, those also are going to have to be identified by those agencies and reported. We cannot report things that are not in our jurisdiction. So right now, as it stands, they are aware of it, and I don't know where they stand. I don't ask what they intend to do, but we offered our assistance and help where needed. So that's just kind of an overview on the Hurricane Milton.
Can I, quick, can I?
Sure.
You talk so fast, Heidi.
Sorry.
So I just want to be clear for my own. So even without a FEMA-approved project, we can go after FEMA and state funding if it was our project? So I thought the whole thing with Flagler Army Corps project was so that it's an ongoing 50-year project. Are we going after the same funding that Flagler Beach will go after? Or is it just set up two different ways with the Army Corps?
So with the Army Corps, when Flagler County entered into the interlocal agreement with the city of Flagler Beach, Flagler County took on the responsibility of managing that project for the city with the intent that, once it was complete, that it would be handed over to the city of Flagler Beach. There is a separate agreement that Flagler County has with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. That agreement triggers us to be the sponsor, to notify, we're kind of like the go-between, us and the Army Corps on behalf of Flagler Beach. So we've notified Army Corps of the need for Flagler Beach's section to be rebuilt. So because it is a named storm, Army Corps would come, if they're going to do an assessment, but they'll hopefully determine that, yes, it needs to be built back. And then they will cover, the Army Corps will cover that expense.
But the county, so the question is, so our project, which would be Reach 3, mostly right now Reach 3, that's a FEMA reimbursement as opposed to an Army Corps reimbursement?
Correct. The only project that we have right now designated as an Army Corps is that section within Flagler Beach. It was what was the critically eroded. There are other sections of critically eroded beach along the entire coast. But when we did the original Army Corps study, the 3x3, which now they call kind of like the 4x4, that was the only area that had been designated. I think that there's an opportunity to have other areas designated for help through the Army Corps program, but that's why we need to move forward with requesting assistance moving forward. I think we're at fiscal year '27 is the financial ask that we're asking for the Army Corps to support, federal budget at the federal level. But then, it will open up opportunities that will reduce the cost at the local or state level if we can find those areas that the Army Corps will engage and do more projects. So it's kind of a bigger picture when we look at. One of the challenges is public access and having access points every half a mile. So the county has taken the liberty to identify parcels that we could either purchase or improve, that we currently own, to have those public access. But it's more than just providing public access. It's also, you have to have parking there. So it can't just be a dune walkover. You have to have it designated. So it's kind of a thing that the county's been working on over several years. We have an HMGP project that had been picked up at the state level where they would allow us to buy uplands along the beach that could be converted to parking, which would increase the public access, which would increase the opportunity for the Army Corps in that area if it is a critically eroded area. So we're trying to match up the critically eroded with these lacking public access to further enhance the ability to get federal funding. So when we look at the initial construction of all of those different segments or reaches, the top is the total cost to rebuild. So like I said, we started in Reach 1. So we've got the federal and then the non-federal cost there. How much came in from the Army Corps was a little over $16 million. And then coming in from the state was the remaining amount there. So it looks like maybe about $13, a little over $13 million, $13.6. And then, as we move up to Reach 2, it's estimated to be $35 million. We were successful in getting some state funding there. And then, as we move up to Reach 3, that's where we start seeing a deficit because the money had been applied to these earlier segments as we're moving north. So as we get into Reach 3, we estimate it to be about a $40 million project. We have a We have a local match or a local need there for 37.5 million. And this is the area that we had talked about previously, about coming up with some sort of a funding strategy. You know, when we, when we look at this, and even though it's showing just that local match appearing in Reach Three, I've mentioned it before at other meetings, there's been a lot of, throughout the entire beach management project, we've committed a lot of resources at the county level, things that aren't necessarily captured here. This is really only the construction cost. But there's been a lot of labor and expenditures that we've incurred in the way of, you know, getting easements, doing surveys, programming, public outreach. It's taken a lot of time and resources from not only administration, the county attorney's office, our communications team, our tourism team with their Dodge the Dune campaign, our county engineering, our GIS, our drones, even our finance team, our budget and our procurement folks that have had to advertise for these contracts, pay the bills, you know, and, and do all of the work. All of those costs that we've incurred are not reflected here. This is really just looking at the construction cost. So I say all that because there's a lot, you know, there's a lot that goes into this. This table really is just the planning values for construction and not those county resource costs. But when we, you know, like I mentioned, when we move forward with that Reach Three, that's where we're seeing a deficit. Up until that point, really, there hasn't been any local funding used other than the resources that I mentioned, staff and our, our internal stuff that we've had to pay for and do. But no local funding for construction has been needed up until this point.
Pardon me, Heidi.
Uh-huh.
I was wondering, do you have an idea of an estimate of what, a guesstimate, I'll put it that way, of what those costs that you just mentioned on our staff and our, our personal cost as a county, a total? Any idea?
I'd be guessing. I don't know.
Okay. You don't have an exact cost on all those things? Okay.
It's something we could probably pull together, but I don't, I don't have it today.
I'd be curious to find out how much we've already invested as a county in our cost is. Okay, thank you.
Probably quite a bit, I would imagine, but we can, we can work on pulling that So as we looked at this section and we were trying to identify some sort of local funding strategy, based on some of the information that I've shared previously, what we're looking at is right now a $17.5 million shortfall. We started with the 37.5 million difference that I mentioned. Internally, again, it takes a lot of staff time, but our coastal engineer has been working with DEP and their program funding. We've submitted applications. I know that she's had at least two applications in there. We feel pretty confident that we'll probably end up getting about $15 million from DEP for this section. And then in the fiscal year '25 budget, we did allocate 5 million towards that. So between those two things, that'll take care of about 20 million. It still leaves a shortfall of 17.5. And as I mentioned before, this money is going to be needed over the next two to three years so that we can construct this section of the, of the beach. When we look at that section of the beach where we have that $17.5 million gap or shortage, we also have six county-owned parks and one state-owned park. So when you look at the total linear feet along the coast, it ends up being about 2.4 miles of coastline. It's almost 21% of the project is publicly owned lands. When you look at the cost estimate to protect those areas, it's about $1.7 million is what we're estimating right now. And these are planning values. It's subject to change depending on what our permit allows us to do when we move forward at time of construction. But these are the estimates that have been provided to us from our coastal engineer consultant. So as I mentioned at the start, there was, you know, some issue about whether or not, you know, there's public purpose or ensuring that there is a public benefit to the use of funding. As I mentioned before, the county's intent and determination of public necessity was stated, it is stated, with every emergency declaration that is formally signed, it includes our actions to address emergency conditions in the near term and through projects that require a long time, you know, things that are, take a little bit longer on the horizon. And then separately, to implement the county's beach management plan for the 18-mile, 18-mile coastline. The county's easements explicitly incorporate the public's customary use of the beach. The county's referencing of customary public use assures that access to beaches that are funded by public monies. This invoking of customary public use on the beach is in addition to the rights of public already granted through Florida Constitution and the statutes that exist today. When we look at project permitting, it necessitates perpetual, perpetual easements to carry out our funded projects. A perpetual easement, among other things, ensures that the public benefits from the use of public funds spent on beaches, whether it's for short-term repair, ongoing maintenance, beach restoration, or renourishment. Protecting the beach, even where private ownership is present on the beach dune, is of paramount public importance, even if the private property benefits incidentally from publicly funded beach projects. The county's easements explicitly incorporate the public's customary public use of the beach. The county referencing customary public use assures access to the beach funded by public monies. And then the easements, the beach management plans, declarations of emergencies allow for government to justify using public funds because the repaired area benefits the public by providing storm protection, erosion control, it's maintaining safe, functional beach access to the public, and it ensures an ecological conservation area exists on the beach.
Heidi, could you repeat those again, please?
Which part?
Benefits, the benefits.
The benefits, just the last part? The, the section of the, when we're looking at the easement, it's kind of like in total, right? So we have-
But you started with storm protection.
So we have storm protection, you've got erosion control, you've got maintaining safe and functional beach access for the public, and then ensuring ecological conservation. So it's that environmental piece that needs to exist for the habitat, coastal habitat, turtles, birds, things like that. So when we look at some of the potential funding opportunities, this is that list that I had showed previously, and more than likely the funding may come from a few of these sources. The top ones are what we were looking at targeting for the original construction and then the regular periodic maintenance following. I didn't go over how much it would cost to maintain it once we build it because I think we need to get to a point of building it first. And I think it kind of confuses people when they're looking at the use of the money, and I think it's, sometimes it's lost that up until this point, we have not charged anybody for this, to rebuild the beach. So everybody south of Reach Three is not going to have to pay for kicking into the beach until we get to Reach Three moving forward. That's where we start to see a deficit. So the bottom two are the ones that we talked about that were directly related to a response following a storm. That's the funding that we would go after during an emergency from the federal and state. So through FEMA and Department of Emergency Management in Florida. When we talked about at the last meeting, there was a comment or questions concerning tourist development tax or TDT, it's the bed tax generated from hotel stays. The use of tourist tax to fund beach management is allowed per state statute. The statute's 125 dot 0104. But in a nutshell, it says that, you know, it can be used for beach maintenance, improvement, and restoration. This is, you know, some ways that it could be used. It could be used to build beach park facilities. It could also be used for beach renourishment. It can be used for shoreline protection, which includes, you know, not just the protection, the enhancement, the cleanup or restoration, it includes all of it. It also covers erosion control. So when we look at Flagler County, Flagler County does levy 5% in bed tax. The way it is right now, it's broken up into three different pots. We've got 1% that goes into beach management activities. We've got 3% that go into the operation and promotion of tourism. And then we've got another 1% that goes into some of those capital projects in the way of grants that we provide recently. We, this year, we provided a grant to Flagler Beach. I think it was like 760,000 roughly for, to go towards their promenade or their new boardwalk. So that's kind of how we split up the TDC, but 1% does go into this for beach management. It generates approximately 900,000 a year. When we built the fiscal year '25 budget, the $2 million that we pulled was pulled from this bucket. It wasn't pulled from the other ones. Over the years of accumulating it, it had gotten to the point that we had $2 million because it is eligible and that's what it's intended for. That's where we got the 2 million for fiscal year '25. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then we had talked about the local option half-cent sales tax. The county adopted this ordinance in 2012 in accordance with Florida statute 212 dot 055 subsection 2. And this went into effect, as I mentioned, in October of 2012. It was for a 20-year term. It does expire in 2032. When we looked at how this funding can be used, it is used to maintain appropriate public facilities, maintain acceptable levels of service, among other things. It can be used for public safety, infrastructure projects. And we explicitly called out beach restoration when we did this because we knew we had a challenge. We knew that this was an area that we could rely on funding. The county does generate about $4.8 million annually. I did want to point out that we receive our portion based on our population in the unincorporated areas. Every city receives their portion of half-cent sales tax, even though you as the Board of County Commission decide to levy it and choose to enact this, every city benefits. It's not just the county. They all get their share based on their population. It comes in, the state gives them their portion. So we generate, our side generates 4.8. The city of Palm Coast is comparable to us. They might be a little bit more. I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but everybody gets their portion. How they choose to use it, it's up to them. We're, we're choosing to use it on facilities, infrastructure. We've used this money in the past for jail expansion. We've used it in the construction of fire stations. We've used it even, I believe a portion of it may have gone towards some other public safety in the way of the sheriff projects. But I did want to point out, just as a point of information, we've talked about this before, but we do have two new board members. Flagler County is the last county in the state of Florida that is eligible to levy an additional half-cent. So right now we levy half. We can levy another half. We are the only small county in the state of Florida that does not take advantage of that and does not levy the other half. I say that because that, that money could be used to go to the beaches or other infrastructure projects where we see we have challenges, whether it's roads, whether it's, you know, stormwater, whether it's the beach, whether it's even some of the facilities. We've got about $145 million in capital projects right now that are unfunded. That's, you know, the SOE expansion or new building. It may be a municipal animal shelter. It may be, you know, it, it could go for a myriad of infrastructure facility projects. We don't levy it. I'm not advocating for it, but considering that we have two new board members, I did want to make sure and remind the decision-makers and the public that this is a funding source And then we talked about the ad valorem property tax. So these are discretionary. Property taxes are based on the tax value of the real estate. They're used to fund local services that benefit the community at large. Property taxes can be used for beach management. When you think about it, if we invest in beach restoration, it can increase the value of the properties in close proximity to the ocean, which would generate more ad valorem revenue for local government. If, if we allow it, the properties to be destroyed by not acting, it would severely impact Flagler County. If we lost the barrier island, we would have a significant impact in Flagler County because of the loss in taxable value. So I just wanted to provide a recap. I went back, I listened to the 11-4 discussion that we had. I think I've covered all of these where, you know, public purpose was mentioned, the use of ad valorem, tourist development. There was a question about how each one of these funds were used along the beach. Right now, the way we envision it is that when we look at the beach management as a whole, we have a project, we are looking at taking the different buckets of money that come in and applying it holistically to the beach project. So we don't have it delineated out right now that says, well, this little section here is going to be tourist development, or this little section here is going to be, you know, the general fund. Through the process, we've identified and quantified how it can be used to serve a public purpose, but when we're looking at applying it to paying a bill, an invoice, we're not looking at breaking out that bill and saying, you know, well, 10% is going to be charged here and 20% is here. It's holistically thrown into a bucket and then applied to pay the bill. If there's a different approach or a different way that the board would like to see that broken out, we'd be happy to work on it. But right now, because all of the funds allow us to use it for a public purpose, and we are saying that, we've declared a local state of emergency, we're saying that this serves a public purpose, we're saying that we have customary use, we're saying that we're getting perpetual easements from property owners, we're saying that there is a public benefit which allows us to use all of the funds that we've identified for that use. When, you know, I think we've talked about customary use already, perpetual easements. There was also a mention of Fort Walton Beach. Fort Walton Beach is, you know, not to go into it, into a lot of detail, but they're not like us. When they moved forward with customary use, there was a change in legislature that it had to be adopted prior to July 1 of 2018. Well, Walton Beach, well Walton County did not do that. They did it after, I think it was November of that year. They have challenges that we don't have. So when they're trying to go after customary use, it makes it a lot more difficult because they didn't get it done before the cutoff. So, you know, when we look at it, you know, we're not subject to those same challenges. There's other counties like Brevard and Pinellas that are in a similar situation to Walton County. We're not in that situation. When we're looking at what we've done, we don't believe that anybody can challenge our project's application across the coastline. If, if the individual property owner wanted to not be part of it, we, they would not get the restoration. We would bypass and we would skip over their property. We're trying not to do that. That's why we're going after the perpetual easements. Even if we, you know, in some cases in Flagler Beach, maybe it started out with a temporary easement until we could secure the permanent easement. But if we have property owners that do not want to be part of the program, that they're not, we're not going to use public funds if we don't have that perpetual easement which protects the public's interest. So when we're looking at this, you know, we're not in the same situation as some of these other communities.
Question.
I have a question for Mr. Hadeed on that topic. So the customary use has four points: ancient, reasonable, without interruption, and free from dispute, correct? So failure of one of those claims defeats the claim according to the Reddington Appeals Court decision in August.
You have to establish those in order to codify-
The customary use.
Customary use. Or if you didn't meet the July 1 deadline, then you have to prove all those things in a declaratory judgment action with the courts.
Correct. Okay, so my question, just to Ms. Petito's point, if we skip a property that would not want to be included, would that defeat the third without interruption piece of the customary use?
No. No, the customary use has already been codified. You don't, I suppose in the future, you could lose it, but it would be because the county allowed somebody to block the beach. The fact that an individual chooses not to participate in the program does not somehow erase, modify, or impede upon the declaration of customary use. The public will still be able to move across the dry sand beach in front of their property.
Okay, so that's for the interruption portion. What about free from dispute? If we were to say this person disputed us doing this project in that area, so therefore we didn't, would we interrupt the free from dispute piece of the customary use?
You're asking a hypothetical that wouldn't arise because we took all the actions to do the codification. Let's say we didn't pass something by July 1, 2018, and we went through the court procedures, then once you get the judgment, let's say you prevail and get the judgment that there's a customary use, nobody can come back in. It's done. Nobody can come back in and collaterally attack it. Nobody can collaterally attack our codification of customary use because we have already proved those things and completed all the steps to take advantage of the constitutional authorization for customary use as well as the statutory authorization.
Okay, so that, I think that was my question. So the statute, the 16335, says if you're in the bucket of having the ordinance between 2016 and July of 2018, which we are, it does, because we're after or within those things, we are not deprived of raising customary use as affirmative defense in any proceeding challenging. So we don't, we don't need the judiciary affirmation by a court.
That's correct. We have totally bypassed that. The legislature allowed us to do it. And fortunately, we and some other local governments, by the way, that followed our lead, did so as well.
Okay, thank you.
So as we look forward to the next steps and what that timeline looks like, this is a slide that I've shown you before. We'll continue to do that legal review and that rationale nexus test. I believe we're going to have more community outreach. As I said, we're probably up to 20, 20-some meetings at this point, but we'll continue them now all the way through July of next year through the creation and adoption of, you know, our budget. We also have work to do with the creation and adoption of an MSBU, MSTU ordinance, if the board were to consider those. We also would have to create and adopt inter-local agreements with the tax collector and property appraiser for that method of collection. We do have coming up on the December 2nd, the public hearing for the MSBU consideration. That's the intent, to use that uniform method of collection. On that agenda, I also have the, I mentioned it earlier, I didn't have it on this list, but it's the letter of intent in support of that Army Corps shore feasibility study to ask for support in that fiscal year, federal fiscal year '27. Moving that forward, we still have to, you know, move forward with notification to the state. There'll be notice to taxpayers about the maximum assessment to be levied. That just gets rolled up into like our normal budget process, which won't be formalized until probably August or September of 2025. And then we hope to start collecting some revenues in November of next year. And as I mentioned before, last week, we met with City of Flagler Beach, but we still need to continue those discussions with the other municipalities. And I look forward to a meeting probably sometime in January with them to talk about And that does it for my presentation, but I'm open to any questions and hopefully I have some answers for you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Questions for Mr. Hadeed or Ms. Petito? If, ahead, go ahead.
First question is, we're going to lose Congressman Walts. So do you have a strategy or do you have some way? That connection with that congressman is probably the most important thing we have moving forward on any Army Corps hope at all. So we, do you have any strategy or is there any way that we, I mean, I know we're not going to know anything till January, but hopefully there's something waiting to file with this person or meeting with whoever takes his place.
We've engaged with their local aide, you know, our contact. We've also engaged with our federal lobbyist. So this isn't new. This is something that's been on their radar. So even prior to meeting with Congressman Walts, we had talked to Rubio's aide. Now, I understand Rubio is moving too, but we will be in contact. There are other people that, you know, we have access to, to make sure that they understand the urgency that we have.
And when did we start that process? Do you remember how long ago? With the Army Corps trying to get Army Corps feasibility study?
I don't recall off the top of my head. Maybe Al does.
That's been years.
Okay. And then, again, this is probably micro and probably doesn't need to be addressed until we start talking about funding, but I pulled out the tourism development budget. $2 million is what's in the budget for this year, and I just need to understand the math, that's all. You mentioned in your presentation that 900,000 a year will be generated by, and allocated to fund 1111. I know it's only 1% at this point, but are you going to get to 2 million by adjusting the, asking for an adjustment in the allocation? So will you be taking from capital and promotion and advertising in order to get to 2 million? Because you can't get there right now.
Well, sorry, I turned it off. Right now, correct, you get, and it varies depending on how much tourists we get, but on average, you're not going to get, yeah, another million. So I think it's going to be, as we work through the budget and we identify funding, we need to look at that. I think at some point, the board, County Commission, is probably going to have to take a look at that. I'm not saying that I'm advocating for changing the structure of the pennies in tourism, but I do think that we probably need to have a conversation, maybe with the TDC board, that if there is surplus funding, I call it surplus, it's money not used that got collected that typically will go into cash carryforward reserves, carryforward to the next year. Because we don't, we don't typically spend everything that you receive. You may end up saving money in the course of a year and have a savings. That savings doesn't go back. It stays in the budget and it would just carry to the next year as part of the carryforward process. So if there is surplus, say in capital, or there is surplus in the promotion, the, you know, the other buckets, I think that it warrants having a conversation not to just, you know, swipe it and take it. But I think that we need to have a conversation, but we also need to make sure that the language, the provisions that we have allow us to be able to do that. Because the way it is right now, it's kind of segregated out. You can't really take from those buckets to put it in there. So I think we have an opportunity to think of a strategy and what does that look like without, you know, changing the amount? Because you can't take like a portion of a percent. You can't take like, in talking to finance, it's my understanding, like, you know, you can't take, it's not really a certain dollar amount, so they go by whole percent. They're not going to go by like a half a percent. So it's not like I can take one and a half. It would be a whole, like a one or two. But I just think it's, depending on the direction of the board and the guidance we have, that's why I think it's important when we meet in December to talk about building the budget. What is the board's priorities? What direction are you giving us so that when we start to create the budget, we start working on that? Because all of those things are going to take time to develop and establish. So the sooner we know, the better.
Isn't it true, Heidi, though, that the 2 million, specifically the 2 million, that's there?
Correct.
This is for this year. It's in your budget for this year at 2.3.
Yeah. So when I, and so because you only, we only got like, say, 900,000 a year. So when we don't spend money in the fund, it stays in that fund, which is why it got to the 2.3 or whatever. That's why we pulled 2 million out and put it into the beach for this year to kind of shore up the 5 million with, you know, partnering it with the half cent. So if you look at the other ones, like I mentioned, when we had our CIP meeting, was it this week? Yeah, Monday. When we talked about the two projects that are coming forward to the board, one being the airport, and they need to secure a small loan in December. The other one was the tourist development ecotourism building. The TDC board has already earmarked the 10 million to go towards the Eco Discovery Center. Those other buckets of money, that's how they got the money that they have available in the cash carryforward to put to the project. So at the end of every year, if there's unspent funds, it stays in the fund. But that's where I think we need to develop a strategy that if there is surplus funds, that collectively between the 1% in beach and maybe whatever's remaining, combined, we come up with 2 million if possible. But I don't know, you know, on the technical side or legal side, that's where I'm going to need help from our county attorney's office to, how do we structure that and bring that in front of the board for adoption? Bring it in front of the TDC board for their, you know, support, consideration. But then when we look at half-cent sales tax, we typically, on average, bring in about 4.8 million. I only had identified or pledged 3 million of it because I didn't want to drain that entire fund. But there is an opportunity there to pull out more to make the 5 million match with the other. So there is some leadway there, but it really just helps having the board provide direction to me so that I can work on the budget as we start developing it on what it is that you would like to see collectively as a board. Because it makes it easier for us because a lot of these things have a lot of moving parts that we have to work on in unison with bringing the budget forward. So it's just helpful.
Well, it's great if there's a slush fund or reserve, whatever, but I just, when I looked at a revenue of 4.4 and 2 million of it going to sand, I thought, how does this math add up? Which it doesn't because you don't generate 2 million a year for sand or to put into that fund. You only generate closer to a million.
Correct.
So it's just, it'll be moving or strategically moving it or legally moving it when it's available.
Yeah, and I think.
And I guess we'll have to think about what happens if that pot gets used up real fast.
And I think when we were moving forward with the public presentations at the time when we, because we started this months ago, what the prior board with three sitting board members and the two that left on Monday, they had identified the 2 million because that's what was sitting in there. So rather than me assume that the board moving forward is going to do something different, it's easier for me to show what the board has already approved, which was, we need to come up with 5 million locally. Right now, it was 2 million, 3 million. Moving forward, that might not be the same makeup. It might be 1 million and 4 million or some other pot of money that we haven't thought of.
Okay, thanks.
And I will add, the TDC board at the next upcoming meeting will be reviewing this as well, and I think a joint workshop with the TDC and the B OCC is planned. Okay, any other questions? All right, I appreciate that. We're going to open it up to public comment. And so if you wanted to approach the commission and have any questions on the presentation, you have three minutes, just state your name and come up to the podium. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Kathleen Doyle and I live in Hammock. And I just have some items I want to bring up related to the MSBU. And the acronym stands for Municipal Service Benefit Unit. So I'm questioning some of the benefits for the western side of the Hammock area. From the previous meetings, I saw one of the benefits, the one that I thought was most beneficial for everyone, is to provide coastal protection from flood and structural damage. And I agree, the east coast, the east side of A1A would definitely benefit from that. But on the west side in the Hammock, it's not really going to benefit, be beneficial to us. It's more of the intercoastal and the flooding from that that we would have concerns about. Also, on the November 4th meeting, there was a slide called "The Potential Fund Opportunities." I believe we went over it again today. But in that structure, it's showing that the MSBU is basically going to provide 22% of the funding, and that's based on 6,500 residential taxable parcels. And finally, my question is on the, there was a resolution included on November 4th. And I think I saw in the slide that the resolution would not be the total adoption of this. It would still have to go to ordinance, and there would be mailings and that sort of thing. And that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Just a clarification, the MSBU that is on the schedule is just so that that tool is in the toolbox. It didn't have any funding allocated to it. It was just the ability to enact one.
And yes, and the other thing that I thought of too was, you know, I would like to see some sort of index or how it could be increased. Because like you're talking about TDC funds, what if, you know, those funds aren't available, but we still need to make up this shortfall? Is that going to fall on the residents of, you know, the Barrier Island? That would be.
And thank you for your email. I got your email. So I'll be responding to those questions.
Oh, about it. I think I had your emails ready.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring you back. Any final questions or clarifications from anybody? All right. Care to move ahead, Jern? We have, just wanted to make sure we had, before we do that, if anybody else had any other items. Do we have a?
Can I go back?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So the question before us, and again, do you answer public comment questions during, right after they talk? Or do you, how do you answer them? So specifically, there's a question, and it's a huge question because I'm getting emails as well. How are we prepared to explain to the western side of the Barrier Island how coastal erosion impedes the flooding and the flow, water flow is very hard to explain to people, but we need somehow to help folks that are on the west side of the Barrier Island understand the flooding issue and how flooding works and why it does definitely help their property? Are we prepared to do? I know you had a great slide at one of your presentations.
I mean, I can talk about it. I don't have a slide necessarily that I can bring up. But when we looked at flood inundation, when you looked at the potential, if we did nothing and you had a dune breach anywhere along Flagler County, depending on the level of storm, it would end up being catastrophic to the entire county. So depending on, you know, like I said, if it's a cat 1 through 5, depending on the varying, you know, types of storm that we got, it would impact all property values, not just people on the Barrier Island, not just people on the west side of A1A. It would impact everybody along the intercoastal, the C-section, the F-section, going all the way out to Pellicier, US1. There's a series of maps that, you know, maybe we need to incorporate that in part of telling the story. But if we did nothing, I mean, nothing is an option, but I don't think that it's a very good option because when you look at what that would do to the entire community, it would be devastating, not just from loss of property, but, you know, when you're trying to maintain a county and provide services and you lose that tax base because essentially it would be wiped out, you know, not even to mention any planned growth or development that exists. There's a number of projects that are making, you know, their way through the county right now that would probably add another $300 million in property values on the Barrier Island right now. That if you did nothing, those projects would dry up. But it does impact everybody. And that's why. And that's why early on, when our first consultant came and was looking at the approach of everybody in the county pays and the closer you are, the more you pay, but everybody should pay. You know, it didn't go over very well, but, you know, everybody would be impacted if you lost the Barrier Island. But when you look at the method of collection, you have to show exactly how are you benefiting? And that's why the, it's easier to show the direct correlation on the Barrier Island than it is for somebody as you go out west. Even though they may benefit, they benefit in a different way. And so when you're trying to protect property and you look at the property values, the people that are closest, which are the Barrier Island people, that's where you're looking at, you know, establishing that's who pays.
Yeah, I have one question too.
Go right ahead.
This is a little oddball of a question, but with the passing of Amendment 5, do we see a change in the projection of these figures? And how it will affect us over the long run?
And I don't know the amendment numbers. I'm assuming that's the Homestead CPI.
I'm sorry.
I've already, yeah, I've already reached out to the property appraisers' office to see what that would do for us. It's much better than what was proposed, which was an additional Homestead exemption, which would have been a lot worse for us because it would have been another $25,000 per each property. With the, and that, I think, was going to be somewhere around like $7 million impact. When we looked at this one, and this was just me calculating the number, I don't want to say it's insignificant, but when I was looking at it, I thought it was only going to be like less than $300,000. It wasn't going to be a huge impact. It is going to be an impact, but it's not, it's not as bad as what was proposed because you're just capturing the inflation factor or that CPI.
And I've, in the public, as I've tried to explain the different impacts that would happen with a dune breach, especially considering the west side. All right, the dune breach does provide an impact. If it goes all the way to the intercoastal, it provides a compound flooding effect with the waters from a breach in addition to storm surge and rainfalls. It's a, it provides a risk to the intercoastal side flooding, which is the west side of the Barrier Island as well. But it's the other parts that compound with that. They're all, they're all together. Because a dune breach of that magnitude impacts all of the facilities, the infrastructure that's feeding the entire Barrier Island, water sewer, the septic systems and roadways. And also, we've seen what happens with saltwater inundation at Washington Oaks State Park. The entire ecosystem changed. The oak trees died. And the Hammock is what it is because of the natural environment that's there. So a massive or a dune break of any size that brings that saltwater intrusion into the landscape will wipe out the atmosphere, the ecosystem, and will change the landscape of the Hammock forever. So those are, those are significant changes.
And Mr. Chairman, I think it's also notable to point out that these are not our flood maps. We didn't dream this up. It's FEMA has all the flood. You can go look up what kind of a breach and what it'll, how it'll affect and who's going to get flooded. It's all there and it's, they're not our maps, but we're using them.
Okay. Did anybody else have anything else to bring up today? All right, now I'll take your motion. Okay.